Well, go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Coats. Commissioner Laird.
Laird, here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lason. Chairman North.
Here. Wallace, would you mind leading us in a word of prayer, please?
Father, thank you for all those gathered, thanking that you got them here safe because they're driving in Casper. I ask that you would give these folks that have come to serve Natrona County a heart of a servant and not hearts of those who want to be served. But those who look out for the benefit of others and not themselves. That you'd give them your wisdom because you know what's coming next year and we have no idea. All we can do is guess. I ask that you give them your wisdom, your patience and your compassion to lead from the seat of a servant and not from one demands of service. In the name of Jesus. Amen.
Um, thank you, Wallace. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Tiffany, you and Renee are up. If you want to pull another chair around. Morton, welcome too, and then make sure the mics are on. Well, I would separate them and then make sure they're both on so whoever's talking. Let y'all start out. We just kind of like to be our representatives for the county. Just kind of like to know what all's going on and what we need to know about.
It's been a busy year with a new director who we have brought with us in case those of you don't remember, Net Pitts. She's been very busy also doing the work of lodging tax and applying it properly to Natrona County to increase tourism. She has prepared a slide presentation to just give you some updates, some numbers and figures if you're okay if we start with that.
Yep, that's fine.
So, um, the first thing I will ask is how the slides will be advanced. Uh-uh, okay, you guys. Guys, I'm not technologically sound, okay? It's not one of my strong suits. Basically, what I put together is just a presentation that will give you an outline of the high points of what we've been up to for the last year. My first day was January 6th, not quite a year ago. And when I came in, I put together a 90-day onboarding plan for the board so that they kind of had a good idea of what my plans were. And so I've broken that plan up into quarters and so you can kind of see what we actually did do. So the first thing was to just kind of do a comprehensive audit of our financial systems. Every DMO, also known as a destination marketing or management organization, operates a little differently. And those differences really do become quite pronounced when you're crossing state lines. So part one was making sure that I understood not only our finances and how our organization ran, what our vendor relationships were like, what were the contracts in place, but what were the statutory obligations that are different here than what I was working under in Washington State? So that was really kind of right off the top. Some big projects that we had were making sure that our staff liaison to compete Casper, also known as Proud to Host the Best, was really up to speed in terms of how we were positioning ourselves as a destination for the current bid for Wash Up. And that was a successful bid. So as you know, those athletics will remain here for the next cycle. I took a big look at our staff, tried to understand what our strengths and weaknesses were, what was the expertise that they brought. But then also I spent a lot of time meeting with our constituents in the industry and tertiary and adjacent to the industry, trying to understand what do the folks of Natrona County want and realign our organization to best position ourselves to meet those needs with the current staff that we have. We did not find that we needed to change our staffing level. We did not let anybody go or bring anybody in. We did try to hire a content manager, but we just did not find a qualified candidate for that. So we wound up basically using some of our vendors that have been really good partners to us and that's been a great move for us. We also started what I call just proof of performance reporting. I want to make sure that anytime you have a question about, so what's going on in our hotels? We have a bunch going up. What does that mean? I want you to be able to answer that question. I don't want you to ever wonder, what are they doing with our marketing? Are they doing anything sales-wise? So you can always go to our website on the industry section. There's a scorecard that is produced every month and we, we put it out there whether it's good news or bad. So it's yours to look at. We also send that out by our industry email newsletter every month as well. We also made some decisions organizationally about our destination development funds that we are able to access via the Wyoming Office of Tourism. And I think you guys are going to talk a little bit about that afterward, but we did make some decisions there, some recommendations that went to our board. So that was a busy Q1 for a new person. Q2, we transitioned into again trying to make some strategic and good decisions about some of the findings, I guess, from Q1. So as I looked at all those vendor agreements and our contracts and looked at their comp sets in the marketplace, one big project that came out of that was our website and CRM or Customer Relationship Management System. I found that we could save at least 40% each year if we changed vendors, even though it was a right old pain and it was going to cost something upfront, but the downstream savings was really significant. So we talked about that and agreed to go ahead and make that decision. That new website, by the way, is going to debut in just a few weeks in December. And we've already been using the new CRM tool and it's been a great thing for us. We updated our in-house research tools so that we were more industry standard, so that we're better able to target the highest value potential visitors, meaning those folks that are going to be staying in paid lodging accommodations. It's not enough just to try and reach, you know, the layperson. We want to make sure that we're bringing day visitors, but we want to convert them into overnight stays in paid accommodations that are generating and replenishing our lodging tax and then hopefully fertilizing our sales tax. We also added a new tool to our sales team's toolbox called Cvent. It's basically like speed dating for between a destination and event planners. So our team can, whether it's sports or meetings, et cetera, they put our facilities and our information and what we have to offer into the platform. Meeting planners then look at it and they can kind of shop for where they might hold their event. They send an RFP through the system. It integrates into our CRM, which will then be integrated through our new website through the partner portal. In keeping with the new research tools, we brought media attribution capacity into our system, which means without getting too far into the weeds, we're no longer having to just place ads and hope that people see them and then not be able to demonstrate that they've come. We're able to place those ads effectively into the ponds where we know the fish are biting and then we reel them in and then we know if we've caught a fish or not. We can go into more detail about how that works at another time because it may or may not please them. Organizationally, we also took a look at our employee handbook. We compared what our joint powers do to make sure that we're consistent. As consistent as you can be with multiple joint powers, but we really looked at the county, the city of Casper, of course, to make sure we're consistent there. We updated our financial policies as well, just adding in another layer of risk management, making sure that we've thoroughly outlined where we have separation of duty, et cetera, so that we're being really good stewards of our funds. Big projects that happened in the meanwhile, we had NJCAA in town, CNFR, and then we had staff at trade shows selling to groups and sports events. We also had our entire group go to professional development training in Minneapolis. In Q3, I found that we were, we were doing a lot of our sponsorship awarding process on paper still, which I love paper, so I like that. But it wasn't the most user-friendly thing or I guess from a front-facing equity basis, it, for people who were applying, it didn't seem that accessible, I guess. So we created an online form that some of you will know because when you've made requests, it said you have to go and fill out this form. Everybody has to fill out the form. We get the same consistent information and we evaluate all of those applications on the same criteria. Other big projects, we produced a resident sentiment survey. This was really important to me, obviously being new to the area. I wanted to make sure that before we established any real strategy for the year's business plan, that we not only know what current trends are in the industry, but I want to know what the people who live and work in Natrona County want and what they do not want, what is important to folks and what is not making the grade. So we started out by doing this digitally, but we only got, I think it was 364 people that completed it. And when I looked at the breakdown of the folks that completed it, 19% were over the age of 65, which to me says this is not statistically relevant because when we look at folks that are showing up at the ballot box, the majority are over the age of 65. So I want to know what's important to those folks as well. So we wound up leveraging some of our development funds to do a hard copy mailer to Natrona County residents that were meeting that criteria, being over the age of 65. And we got over 750 handwritten lengthy responses. So we really got a good idea of how to position our work for the year. The board also made those decisions I referenced earlier about destination development funds that were made accessible to us from the Wyoming Office of Tourism. Those are listed there. So we allocated funds to David Street Station, City of Casper Wayfinding, Indian Relay Races, Natrona County Wayfinding, project out at Health Half Acre and also a community education program for the community. And then Q4, based on all of that fun investigative process, we deployed our very first comprehensive business plan for the destination, which basically combined what the organization has done historically with a detailed marketing plan and annual report. We added a sales plan, also an organizational plan and a community outreach plan. So we were trying to be a little more comprehensive. We just conducted our first tourism master plan steering committee meeting to update our countywide tourism master plan. The first version was done in '21. There was an update on in '23 and now certainly the world has changed a lot. So we want to make sure that we're being current and that we're good with that. We did also have an international tourism training here in Casper with the Wyoming Office of Tourism that we provided at no charge. We did just successfully complete our audit for 2024 with no findings. The staff in my sales office has had smoke coming out their units. We, one of the tools that we have in-house is our Economic Impact Calculator. It's an industry standard tool that we purchased from Destinations International. They produce over 100 economic impact reports for our jurisdictional partners in less than, I think, a month. Shelby and Kate, that was great speaking. Let's see here. We just completed sales for our destination guide and downtown pocket map. I think revenue diversification is really important to not 100% rely on lodging tax. It's the vast majority of the funding that we have accessible to us, but we know there are certain things that are not appropriate to use lodging tax for. So having things like advertising sales that we can leverage in that way, as long as they're still compliant with state statute, is really important to us. Our staff and some board members went to the WHTC Fall Summit. Our marketing program continued on and we are getting ready to do a budget amendment. That budget amendment is for two reasons. One is because of the, there's a reimbursable grant associated with Health Half Acre that I think for some reason we had thought that County Parks was doing, but it was actually signed by our previous CEO. So we learned that after we passed our budget. So we're going to amend for that. And then we just had some additional expense and income changes. So we need to and get that taken care of here pretty quickly. I think December 8th is our date. And then just very quickly, some trend information for you. This slide is taken from our geolocation tool called Datify and it is year-to-date. This is based on basically phones, devices that have been seen in our destination. We don't get any information about whose devices they are. We don't have anybody's names or anything like that, but we do know that we have what, if you've ever taken a statistics class, you will know what a normal distribution curve is. That's what we don't want. We have a lot of people coming during certain months and then we have all of this opportunity area, which are the troughs. So I feel like one of our jobs, one of the strategies we have internally is how do we flatten this curve? We don't want to drop that, that ceiling in summer where you see all that peak visitation, but we need to fill these months from January to June and from September to December. And I know that's hard in Wyoming with wily weather and all of the things, but there's a lot of opportunity out there with areas that we haven't even touched on yet or we've kind of touched on lightly. So but I think again, having the right research tools helps us to be better informed about what the work is we need to do.
Net, have you identified or have we got an identification of where the differences are? I mean, obviously we have tourism during the middle of summertime and it's going to be our peak. But as far as those other areas, how, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this appropriately. How do we determine what or what's bringing those people during the rest of the time of year? And how to increase that?
It's more of an art than a science, even though there is some science to it. So we look at a variety of different tools, I guess. So geolocation is one, right? So we can see, all right, this is where we have these periods of availability. We then work kind of backwards or laterally and we look at our, they're called star reports. Smith Travel Research produces them. And they are occupancy reports from our hotel properties. I, I never take this stuff for granted that is right, first of all, because I think you have to validate data before you can believe it. So I will overlay geolocation data with our hotel data, go, okay, it really looks like this was a great time or hmm, this, this wasn't. When we validate that, okay, this is a real opportunity time of year or let's say it's July, then I can get into that platform and not just look at a bell curve. I can look at the days, say, okay, this very specific day I had 100 people that came to the county. And then I can look, where did they come from? Ah, it looks like they came from Rapid City or wherever. Then I can then look at our event calendar. I look at our sponsorship calendar. Sometimes we cannot make heads or tails and we just have to, this is where the art comes in. Then you just have to use human connectivity and say, Renee, it looks like we have 100 people that are, I can't say Ram Coda. Well, no, I don't think I can. I don't remember, but I would make a call and say, it looks like we have these numbers here. Is there something going on that you know about that I don't? There are also what they call POI cross-correlation reports that I can say, all right, these folks are at the Ram Coda. They were also seen at the YO Sports Ranch. They were also seen at the Event Center and they came from Denver and we can start doing some speculating. So I don't know if that effectively answers your question, but I feel like I'm a forensic scientist.
Well, I know there's a lot. That's grown a lot.
This is just one more quick geolocation slide. Just on a macro level, this shows again year-to-date and I just filtered for anybody that's from outside the area, 50-plus miles away. When you look at who all came to Casper, 65% were travelers from outside of Wyoming. So I think this is noteworthy, just if you ever have somebody say, well, I don't know why we have to put money into tourism. It's all just Wyoming people going to Wyoming. It's not. We do have Wyoming people coming to Wyoming, but we have a lot more folks coming from outside the state. Some learn. Those are in-state travelers. Yeah. Do you want me to go back now? Some industry updates. So Diane Schober stepping down as Executive Director of the Wyoming Office of Tourism. She is an icon in the industry. So Dominic is going to have some big shoes to step into, but I know he's got, he'll be cut out for it. He'll do great. He's got incredible staff. They're pretty legendary. So we will be in good hands. Glenn Gardner, also with the Office of Tourism, is present at all of our board meetings. So they're connected to us. They know what we're working on and we know how to reach out to them so that we have that connectivity. We will have staff at the Governor's Tourism Conference coming up in February. We would love it if more folks from Natrona County went to that.
Of course. With regard to the state and the ecosystem of tourism, it used to be the philosophy, we'll deliver on to the borders and good luck Casper, get in America. And that has changed over the years. The destination development funds are a prime example of that. The $600,000 that was received was money well invested in not just contributing lodging tax, but also we were told at the Fall Summit that that is being reviewed this year. So we're going to have money to develop.
And of course, because you know, I love having a standardized process. We will be creating a standardized process now that we know that they will be standard to be processed. Other updates, I'll go to Destinations International's annual convention. I do have a CDME certification that requires that I go be present at those. We also, as you will have seen in that first slide, are accredited through Destinations International, which is no small feat. So we have to maintain that. I'm going to take some of my board, some of our officers to the Board Leadership Symposium in January. I think it's really important to to talk to other board members that are running like organizations to talk about, you know, some of the opportunities and challenges and things that they're experiencing. And there's just a big component of it is administered by a company called CFO by Design and it's all on fiscal stewardship. So just making sure we are all tracking with what the industry expects and all that good stuff. Local things, I think maybe kind of what you were thinking about, like where opportunities are. I think one of the areas that we can really lean into is small and medium-sized meetings. You know, sports is king, right? We know that. We're going to keep running for that and maintain that. But we don't have a large convention space. And I, when I say a large convention space, I mean attached to a hotel. We certainly have an event center, but we don't have, if you're somebody out there trying to produce an event that's going to have 2,000 conference goers, that's not our market. And that's okay. We can work with what we do have and we can work a lot harder and a lot craftier to fill those spaces. Certainly sports, I think we're just at the tip of the iceberg and we can keep building on that and the success of our predecessors. Using the latest, you know, marketing tools, we're not accidentally wasting money on marketing that isn't driving visitation. It's really important to us. And then just some of the challenges that we're dealing with, economic forces and cost pressures, you know, decreased demand and hotel occupancy. This can't be a surprise. The world is a wild and wacky place right now. I think a lot of folks aren't feeling entirely secure on the fiscal front and so people are being pretty conservative. Renee shared some really interesting feedback from a hotel group about, do you want to share that with us?
Plus Intercontinental Hotels, so that's all the events, front classes, the host brands. They are not looking really positively for next year. They think it's going to collapse this year, which is down for next year. ADR, which is Average Daily Rate, they expect that to be a good one. And event-driven business is what they're looking at.
Also known as demand generators. And that is something I don't think I that is a lens I would ask everybody to look through. It's demand generation. It can be an event, a festival, a sports event. It could be, maybe you're a member of the associated lawmakers of something or other. Let's figure out if you're in these affiliations, when you go to a conference, where do you go? I want to bring them here. So like, I think there's some just guerrilla marketing that we can do to drive new business that doesn't need to be crazy, but it's just based on communication and having those lines of communication. So. Other challenges, of course, limited transportation and accessibility or reliability and availability of flights is just, there's no way we can say that that is not an issue. It is an issue. Just again, we talked about space. You know, we can't go, we can't compete on large group. So that's just a fact. It's kind of where we are for my year almost.
One quick little note with the master plan and surveys that we received there. People in the county want to go to Casper. They want to go to Casper. They want to go out to the state. And so we want to keep doing this.
We've got a few ideas. So.
Any other questions? I appreciate y'all coming in today. Go ahead.
I read the news article in the Tribune this morning, was that pretty accurate?
You said a news article this morning?
Well, well, wait a minute, this one I got the paper this morning. It said you guys were gonna be here on Tuesday, and what the discussion was gonna be. Front page article. That was about advance Casper. I mean, in this meeting. Oh, visit Casper, sorry.
That's okay, like, how did I miss that article?
It was a good article, you should look at it.
I will, I will, for sure.
Would help if I had my glasses on.
I have the exact same.
Well, thank you for coming in, I appreciate you guys coming in and letting us know what's going on. Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, good afternoon, Chairman.
How are you?
I'm okay. So this afternoon, I came, I actually initiated one action, but am also giving you a quick update for Community Action Partnership, Healthcare for the Homeless, which is a part of the outside boards for the Neptre County. One of the things that I did was look at what the investment is based on what the county commissioners contribute annually, which we are very grateful for. And also, so you can see the volume of capacity that we're dealing with at this time, which is definitely growing. Last year, we, last fiscal year, served over 1,700 individuals. Those families, over 1,000 families. And in that, we were doing direct services, in other words, eviction prevention, utility shut offs and things like that, to the tune of over, well, almost $400,000. The investment that is provided of 85.5 is leveraged against that almost $400,000, so it comes up with a ratio of 4.4 to 1 on a return on investment. Systemically, that same investment that you make goes against a $2.5 million budget that we create, which is a 29 to 1 ratio on return on investment. It may seem minor to some, but that 3.4% is very important to us because how it anchors us to the community. It is a direct representation of the engagement of the community and this board in supporting its citizenry when they need the most. And it allows us to leverage and secure federal and state funding from a variety of sources, which I listed for you. In addition, I entertained a very good question from Commissioner Coats regarding what proportionately is our service to the city of Casper versus the outer areas, as well as do we receive any other funding, and you did ask me that at the last budget hearing this last year. So I did cover that, so in the last fiscal year, the city of Casper invested a little less than $5,000 for 39 individuals. And over 60% of the individuals that access our services, actually it's pretty close to 70%, come from the city of Casper. The breakdown, what I can tell you about that look is, they cover that $5,000 was predominantly attributed to utility deposits and utility arrearsages. Specifically, we deal in a lot of wall shut offs. And it is .001% of our budget. So that is, that funding specifically, just so you know, is one cent fund, so those are funds that we were awarded that are span over a five-year period of time. One of the things that's really important at this time, we just came out of a very long federal shutdown. My organization, because we have done our due diligence, I think we have a very strong board, and we were very focused prior to the shutdown. We were able to navigate that landscape without having to cut, we didn't have to cut back on services, we didn't have to interrupt staffing, we didn't have to do anything except respond to the needs of the community that were starting to grow from other areas that were not being able to deliver. Specifically, utility shut offs, there was not any LEOP. So the older adults who typically are served during that timeframe were encountering shut offs, shut offs did not stop. They also lost their SNAP benefits at the same time. They stacked those benefits on a fixed income in order to survive. And they didn't have them. So our organization had to step up and reallocate funding and move funding around in order to pay the deposits, get those utilities back on, because otherwise, it's a habitability issue. Not just not having heat, and not just not having lights, but no refrigeration. That can be compromising from a healthcare point of view because of lack of refrigeration for insulin and proper food. So it just, it's a snowball effect, and so we intervene in a lot of different ways, and I just give you that as an illustration, because we had to set up ourselves for success in this, because we had no lo- we didn't know how long it was going to go on. At the same time, as you all know, there is a continuing resolution that is been moved forward through January 30th. There are three appropriation bills that were already passed, and the rest, there are nine more to go at the federal government level. One of those appropriations is Labor HHS, which is where the CSBG funding sits. CSBG, a lot, along with many other federal funding sources this year, it has been noted that there is a great deal of them that have not been authorized in many years. LEOP has not been reauthorized, Head Start had not been reauthorized, CSBG has not been reauthorized. And that there is a deep concern that reauthorized programs may not receive funding. However, CSBG is also a very strong bipartisan program, and it has been for many, many years. It is one of the few funding sources in HHS that actually does have dual support across the aisle. So we thought that it would be important, our board and staff, to articulate to our representation at the federal level, some facts and figures so that they would be able to, when the information and the appropriations come up for a vote, they would be educated on how it impacts Neptre County. So I drafted a letter, I have copies for each representative, both our senators and our congresswomen, and that we would like to send on behalf of our board to just educate what our capacity has been and what our dedication is to Neptre County. And that is why I'm here today, is to just make sure that you're aware of that, and that you, that is something that is in alignment with your wishes. Thank you.
Kelly, have you, do you have any funding from the city?
There has not been an opportunity to date, however, we did apply for the opioid funding in a collaborative grant with the Health Department, CWCC, and Kind Grounds. That is going in front of the city tonight. And the allocations that were determined on that committee. And so there's a portion of that that we will receive that will go to a different part of our program. There has not been an opportunity to request said funds for anything further. I think that there, it would be nice if there was an opportunity to do so with the change in leadership, perhaps we can do some education that would allow for that door to open, because I think what's really important is, there are certain types of services that contribute to decline in stability of housing. And people who are kind of just barely making it, but they are, right? They, if they have one more thing that hits, then all of a sudden, they're not, their inner rurages on their power, and that will cause an eviction faster than a lot of other things. And a landlord will displace. We don't need any more homeless individuals in this community, there are 167 as of today's count of who are not able to secure housing consistently. This community needs no more. And we don't need any more unhoused children. You can ask the school district in the McKinney-Vento area on how serious that is. Our older population, who is growing in the homeless community, particularly the street homeless community of car homelessness, we don't need any more of that. So preventative measures, or what we would call upstream interventions, would be much more effective, and also looking at strategizing, and I did have this conversation with the state recently on it, because I do have experience actually in other communities on energy interventions and energy education for this population. I would like to start deploying some of those strategies so people will be able to conserve and be more cost effective with their energy usage. Long answer.
Yeah, the reason why I asked about the city is because now would be the time to set an appointment with them, get before their council, and bring that up, because they're gonna start looking at their budget stuff fairly soon, and their budget process is pretty long and arduous. So I would recommend reaching out.
I will definitely.
We're doing the same thing on a few different levels, and because the city hasn't stepped up.
I think the opportunity, and I take your counsel well, I will follow up on that, Chairman. I think that one of the circumstances has been, when I inherited the organization, there had been some confusion and relationship with the city, and over the last three and a half years, we have had the opportunity to really develop a stronger rapport. We have worked on projects together, I present in front of them typically at least twice a year. And they volunteer on two of my public projects. So I think that we have laid the groundwork to have that conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Coats.
Kelly, thank you for coming today. I have to say, I don't think many people realize the good you do in the community.
Thank you.
And the return on investment that the community really gets for how little the county really gives your organization. The return on investment is massive. Every time that I come into the office, and most recently when I came into your office, I was amazed to see how many people were reliant on the service, so absolutely can't say how happy I am with the job you guys are doing, your staff included, you're doing a lot with a little, and it's, should be applauded.
Thank you very much, I feel like we're a pretty purpose-driven organization. We are, for those of you that, he came and visited our office recently, we are under the same roof for the very first time in the organization's history. So the clinic and the self-sufficiency side are all in one location, which allows us to drive the economy of scale for our services, we can do more in a shorter period of time around someone and not waste their time if we cannot serve them, which is what I think is really important in this day and age.
I guess the last thing I have is, you know, the Community Action Partnership is one of those those really great things that we have that helps the county solve or otherwise wicked problems that aren't really unique to one jurisdiction or another, you know, this is a, this is a county problem, this is a state problem, this is a federal problem, we have homelessness and disenfranchised people everywhere, so regardless where your funding comes from, any funding helps, I'm really glad that the county can be a part of that, so thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Nick Larson.
I echo those comments of thanks and gratitude for the services you provide to the community, and I'm very supportive of the county making the contribution that it makes and how well you leverage that, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I just also wanna reiterate exactly what they said, seriously, it's really, it's heartwarming, almost, you know, you're here and you're doing this work for people, members of our community. That's just fantastic.
Thank you, I just wanna say it's interesting to be following Visit Casper, because three and a half years ago, I was looking on the website when I was getting ready to take the job here. And I was learning about a place that I had, would be coming to sight unseen. And it has turned into a place that I love, the people that I care about, the people I walk among, it is a community that I hope to provide a little bit of quality to, so other people will want to stay here and work. Because there is value in developing this community, and if we can contribute to the community wellness and the livability, then more people will stay, and it's a great place to be, so thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Lard.
At one time you wanted to expand the board from nine to some number more than that, that never did happen, did it?
Actually, it did through the State Department of Health, or Department of Health that oversees our CSBG. What they did was, because we have oversight of Converse County as well, we were allowed to bring three seats on that covers Converse County. We keep it, the State Department of Health allowed us to keep it at 11, which is actually allowable under the tripartite standard. Took a lot of research on that. But we kept it at 11 rather than 12, we have, and so that's what the roster reads in, with the State Department of Health grant her.
Good, well, thank you very much, you do do a fine job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just out of curiosity, how much does Converse County contribute?
How much do they contribute to our budget? We get 25 from the county, we receive funding from the city of Douglas, and we receive funding from the town, we receive support from the town of Glen Rock as well.
Out of curiosity, how much is the city of Douglas?
They give us, I believe last year was 15,000.
There you go, city Casper's only giving you less than five.
Yeah.
Lot smaller, they're giving you three times as much, 30.
They have a very strong leverage, what they call aid to family. And both community, and both of them do that annually, it's been, as you know, we took on Converse County because that was dropped by a previous entity, and the state asked us to take it on. Their commissioners have been very helpful, and then they provide us with some in-kind support as well, which makes up for some of the cash. So thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah? You an honor. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Tim is going to provide you an update on the bill, we're very excited to know where we're at on all of that, and finish up with discussion about the letter, you are ready for that.
Okay, I'll try to roll through this quickly and cleanly. I'm hoping that all of you get a chance to review my monthly reports and stay abreast of all the activities that are happening at the job site. What I wanted to do is just go through a quick update. This is even more current than what came out at the end of October. The project is currently six weeks ahead of schedule. They would finally admit that, even though they've been hinting at it for a while. Substantial completion of the project is scheduled for December 17th or 18th, depending on when paperwork comes through. Final completion, they're looking at January 19th, a month later after they have a chance to address all the potential punch list items. Furniture will be arriving the week of January 5th. Setup will be occurring that week. The health department's move is planned to start January 26th. And I think you're closed that week, correct? Yeah. And then they will officially open February 4th. So that's a good month ahead of schedule. So that's, that's awesome. That's great news. Currently, some ongoing construction activity. We just completed the water leak testing at all the window openings last Friday. They found a couple of minor leaks. Those were taken care of before the consultant left town. So that's all been addressed. Landscaping is all complete. They're still working on a little bit of what I call hardscaping, which would be rock and those types of things. But that should be wrapped up this week at the latest. They're installing resilient flooring in Area B. We're working on completing the perimeter wall, parapet caps and coping as the weather allows. Wind makes that a little bit difficult, but not terrible. Final paint is occurring in the administration exam in Area B. Acoustical ceiling tile are being dropped in Area B. Carpet flooring is down in Area B. Spine ceiling, which is the main corridor as you enter the building that runs north, south. That grid is being installed. They're installing plastic laminate wall panels. Wood ceiling slats are going in along with lighting. Bathroom specialties such as paper towel dispensers, toilet paper dispensers, those types of items are being installed in the restrooms. Interior doors and hardware are being installed and completed. Owner provided equipment installation has begun. Plumbing fixtures are about complete. And Sampson has been working on what they call a fruit punch list, where they send their own team through the building ahead of time, looking for any items that they feel need to be addressed. And they're picking those up, hopefully minimizing the punch list from the design team when they come through next month. Some upcoming activities, the generator should have shipped this week. It's set to arrive by the 24th and they'll place it and connect it immediately. Spine solid surface tops will be installed here shortly. Final paint throughout, some resilient and LVT flooring that's not complete yet will be finished. Marker boards, tack surfaces, all those kind of minor things that happen at the conclusion of the building. Final cleaning and the test and balance and MEP commissioning will be occurring. Test and balance should start here shortly. The programming for systems has been ongoing now for some time. And they have moved back into the building now to download all their information into the building systems itself. Final inspections and punch list will be coming up next month. And as I mentioned, FFNE furniture fixtures and equipment will be delivered and installed shortly. From a budget standpoint, still great news, the original, you all have this, I think, in your packet. It's the spreadsheet that talks about the project soft costs, which include design services, testing, plant, review fees, Rocky Mountain Power Connection, Black Hill Energy Development Costs, building commissioning, design services from away, myself and others. All of those things are included in, in this area. That 7.2 million has not changed since the outset. And currently, that budget also carries 1,575,332 dollars in owner contingency. We've not touched any of that. We won't touch any of that. Plus, if you all recall, after the project bid came in under budget, we still did some searching and review of specific items within the project budget, looking for cost reductions that wouldn't affect the outcome of the design or quality of work. And from that, we gained another 386,460 dollars that we've been able to reduce that number by. So your current owner contingency, including those cost reductions, is just a hair under $2 million, 1,961,792 dollars, which is bottom area on the sheet. Oops, sorry. Plus, general contractor, CMAR, has carried within their budget a contingency amount that they can address minor things throughout construction. And we're anticipating that we're going to see about $500,000 remaining in that budget at the conclusion of the project. So when you add that in, we're at 2,461,792 dollars in total contingency and/or savings to the project. So, and there's still a few other unspent allowances that they have in and amongst their budget that will finalize at the completion of the project. So I'm pleased to say it's been a fantastic project. Everyone's been on top of it. There's been great collaboration amongst all the team members. And that leads to this big improvement in the project schedule and savings in the project budget. So.
We've been fortunate with the weather too.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate with the weather.
Shut down, very, very limited compared to normal years. That has definitely been positive.
Well, and I think too, with you all making the decision to allow them to start that early dirt removal package, made a huge difference in that because they started dirt work in April of last year and they were ready for foundations before the end of the summer, which allowed them to get out of the ground before the weather turned. So yeah, kudos to you all too for taking that job.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Tim or Anna, first of all, great job. I think this is a wonderful example of how a public works project, a building can be done right. So congratulations to you and your team. Knock on wood. But great to hear about being, I guess, ahead of schedule and on budget with that contingency being untouched. We have talked about the generators that you currently have and the sale of that. We determined that the one that the county has over at the corners will be better for our emergency purposes. So have you taken any steps to sell the generator you have? And are we ready to proceed with that from your perspective?
Not considering what happened last week, absolutely. We're ready to pursue whatever opportunities or wishes that you have in regards to the generator as it is property. I'm not sure where some of the things looked off with Farinon.
Well, that's, that's one thing. After this event that we had last week, I was going to ask you about that and how well that worked over there. If, if you, if everything stayed on and, I mean, because there were some, we had some other issues in some places because of the feedback and everything else, electrical feedback. Where generators were turning on, turning off, turning on, turning off. And then they, when they finally bypassed the switching, it made all the difference in the world until they got solid power. And I didn't know how well that one worked over there for you. And that's one of the things I was going to ask is how well that did. Because that's important that, that you have constant power.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's an excellent question. And I'm very proud to say that we did not lose any activity whatsoever. Internet was down, which is, you know, nothing that we can control. But everyone was able to continue with work, computers, freezer, refrigerators, lights. Everything was completely intact for us. So we were able to stay open and provide full services outside of the internet.
All right, well, my understanding is that coming out of Department of Homeland Security that we better be prepared for situations like that in the future. So that's, that is definitely something that I'm glad that we had backup over there that was adequate. I'm glad we've got a generator that's going in at this new facility that's going to be adequate to take care of that situation as well. And as far as where that generator needs to be replaced or repositioned to is something that we may need to look at instead of having to buy another one. So.
It has very minimal use. It does get tested every month. Great, you know, once we had to replace the other one, it has never had an issue. We test run it. That's probably the most hours that we put on it. But it definitely does kick in when we need it. So it's in great shape.
Has that one got an automatic test cycle on it? So it comes on automatically once a month and tests and runs? Because I know a large, large portion of them do. They've got them set up where they aren't necessarily feeding power, but they kick on so that everything is active. Because I know one of the ones here close to us hadn't been utilized that way and it created some scare for a few people.
I believe that someone comes and tests it.
Okay.
The other question is your furniture that you currently have at the health department. My understanding is that you are planning on selling that. It's so, you would do that kind of after the Moviasum?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Nicolason, that is one thing that I've been working with. I reached out to our legal team to kind of talk about what that looks like, to make sure that it is within the guidelines and be followed with surplus equipment. Everything has quote unquote aged out from grant purchases. So there's nothing to be concerned about that. So we laid out kind of like a procedure of what that would look like. I have sent it on to the auditors to kind of just get another opinion from them. It was recommended by our board chair to do that, making sure that we're very transparent and clear on what we're doing. But there will be a surplus of desks and chairs and different things like that. And we want to be sure that it's completely within the guidelines. So.
Thank you.
I like driving by that new building because I like to see the changes in it and night and day. And I'm really proud of both of you. And I'm glad you both have been working on this project because I think it's something that our citizens will be proud of and it will help our citizens. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, if you think the outside is amazing just going there, we have meetings that are every other week. And each time I go, there is significant change or impacts. It is mind blowing to see how much has changed all the way through the process. And so I do remember early on you were at a tour. Remember if you, I don't know if you remember the words that you said, but you wanted us to be in the building and how soon could we get into the building? So it may not be within the guidelines of what you said that day, but I mean, they did work very hard to get us in as soon as possible. We just are hitting the holidays, which is kind of a difficult thing.
Well, what I'm happy about mostly, because I thought about another conversation you and I had at the very beginning, where I hoped that it'd be finished before my term ended. And so that did happen, apparently. It's going to happen in the first part of the year. And I'm very happy about that because it's a project that's gotten done. It's going to be very, very nice. And, and I know Mr. Nicolason worked very hard on it as a leader. And I appreciate all the people who have worked to make that project happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do believe the services that we'll be able to provide and the ease of accessing those services will be instrumental in the health of our community.
All right. Now the letter of support.
So as you congressional directed spending that 1.5 million that we've been working with, again, I have to say thank you to Community Action Partnership for helping guide some of that process. Thank you to Tracy and Nick for that fun work that they do. The government shutdown did close things down for a period of time. We have two outstanding tasks that we need to do. One of them, they will not finalize anything until we prove that we were able to, we had the funding completely in place to have the project completed. At the time that I took that on, I did not know that that was a requirement. And so working with Commissioner Nicolason and going back in time, noting that it was approved up to a certain amount of money, then I can send the letter that I sent the example draft to them and put in the file. And then that task will be completed and we can move on and just have the one reporting piece left.
Okay, so you still need a letter or you, okay, all right, okay.
That just proves to them that.
That we're following through? Okay. That, that was something that I didn't quite understand. And that there's some, there's always a few things you get lost in translation. And that was one of them. So. No, thank you.
But that is that one last piece. She told me not to resubmit my prior authorization until I was able to prove we had full funding. So that can't go on any further. And it is due by November 30th and we're trying to adhere very tightly to their deadlines.
Okay. I don't, I don't see, yeah, yeah, that's not a big deal. So I just, like I said, it's just nice to hear what the whole story is instead of just bits and pieces.
Absolutely.
So that's, okay. All right. That should take care of it. We're running behind schedule.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the WIC lease, I know that we're aware that it's hanging out there. But with it being effective January 1st, my understanding is there are some time constraints that we need to give Anna and legal department some guidance on how the lease is supposed to read. And we don't need to find print hammered out today, but I think we need to talk about whether we're going to have the county be the lessor or have the health department be the, for example, the lessor's agent that's authorized to enter into that lease agreement. So, and then whether the funding, the revenue generated from that lease is going to be received by the health department or if it's going to be received by the county. So I know Anna had asked in a few emails this past month for guidance and a decision on that. And I think that we just need to give our guidance so that our people can, can move forward and that lease can be negotiated and drafted by the state and legal.
I think Ashley needs to come discuss that because that, going from legal counsel, when they're recommended, that this be a contract between the state and the county.
So, so I am currently, I'm working on, and I do have a draft. I was just going to put it, I wasn't able to get it drafted until last week, so it was short. I would have been too short to get it on this. But we are, we do need to do a lease with the Department of Health for the new building. I do have a rough draft of it, but there is some provisions in that too that are going to be up to you guys on how we want to handle certain things. I mean, and obviously that lease would also affect, could, could affect the WIC lease as well. Right now, it does not, you know, in pretty standard language, no subletting unless authorized. So I mean, it could affect this. Additionally, there are some issues that I noticed in this lease, for the WIC lease, that I think we would need to address too fairly quickly. And one of them is the termination clause. Because it does not currently allow us to terminate, only the state to terminate. That's something that I just want to address with, and that here too.
That would definitely be something that we would.
And no matter what, whether, yeah, and no matter what, whether we would. And no matter what, whether, yeah, and no matter what, whether we would allow a sublease or whether we want to, this lease to be with the county, I think that provision's going to have to get changed no matter what.
Personally, I think that this is ought to be, I'm going to go with what your recommendation is, is that this ought to be with the county and that those fundings, and I understand your concerns, Anna, about the increase in utilities and stuff like that. But we can, we can modify budgets within the county to compensate for things like that and take care of it. And I think personally, I think it makes it a lot cleaner if it's a direct lease with the, with the county from the, from the state. From the state, so that's my personal feeling.
So was that your recommendation? I didn't hear that actually.
So, so I didn't actually talk about that. I will say that my professional recommendation was, it would be, I don't, we can allow subletting, but I don't, I caution about subletting. I have seen in, when I've worked for a city and stuff like that, we had a lot of issues with sublets. Elite, you know, subletting, damaging property, and then we're stuck with the bill, that kind, you know, a bunch of different things. So personally, my professional opinion, I don't like them. Legally, we can do them. It's up to you guys on whether you want to allow subletting. I've just seen a lot of issues with them, with subletting.
So, so my, I appreciate that and I want to avoid the issues, but what I think this does is open up a can of worms with all the other county property. I know that the airport, that's county property and we do not want to be the lessors under the 20 different types of agreements and uses. I mean, they have residential stuff going on out there. They have those, the hangar leases. It would fundamentally shift the type of relationship and that I think we have. I know the fair board, we own that property, but we're not engaging in direct leases with users of the fair property. Same with the library, that's county property, but we're not engaging in the leases. My preference is to allow the primary users and occupants of these properties to enter into agreements directly with, with users, third party users that are consistent with their overall use agreement with the county. I don't really see it as a subless, a sublet arrangement. What I think we can do is a building or a facilities use agreement. So it's not even technically a lease that spells out, for example, between the county and, in this case, the health department. Here's the, here's the premises. This is how you're going to be using it. We're not going to charge you rent as long as you're providing X, Y, Z public benefit. And I think it can be done in one page. And I've started a revision that I can work with the, the board and this board and with you on. So I think it's a facilities use agreement that the county enters into and then lets the, these outside boards enter into their leases directly within this case, WIC.
I think the airport's a totally different situation completely because of the way they're operated and the way they run and everything else. So I'm not even going to include the airport in this. And my, my question is, do these others actually sublease for long-term use? There's a big difference between short-term use and long-term use. What we're talking about is, is a continual long-term use. And it's not, not the same as what the fairgrounds does with, when they lease out specific venues for a short-term, 24 hours or less, or 72 hours or less in some cases. So I, I do think that there is a difference between the two and I think there should be a separation in there.
And I will say with the fair, I know like we have the UW Ag stuff. We do have an MOU with them that does kind of articulate, you know, that we will provide office space and whatnot. Details like what we're, we would provide to that. So they do have an agreement with the county. It doesn't say lease or, you know, facility use agreement, doesn't say those words specifically, but does, you know, kind of cover those kinds of things.
So it's kind of like a facility use agreement, a building use agreement?
I would say it's included in the MOU. I mean, the MOU is more extensive than just that, right? I mean, it does talk about facility, basically facility uses and we will provide them with those spaces and what we're responsible for.
So I'm guessing that a lot of that is similar to what our agreement is with the guardian ad litem or some of the others.
So that one, they have a full lease. We do have a full lease with the G A Ls. We have a full lease with the public defenders.
And those fundings come back into the general fund?
To my knowledge, yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The, I mean, the guardian ad litem and the public defenders are obviously state entities. We're just required by statute to provide them with space. So I'm not sure what money about coming back into the general funds you're referring to? Or did I misunderstand your statement, which could have happened?
Do we actually have a lease from them or we just provide them with the location?
No, we actually have, we have a lease with the G A L. We have a lease, well, I have actually seen that lease. I have not been able to find the lease with the public defender, but I know we have, have had one. And just to put some context to this, I know it, since Ashley came aboard and Danae and just a whole new group of people, we have tried to keep up on all this. And I don't disagree with Commissioner Nicolason that, hey, why doesn't the library have one, but Johnny Joe has one? Perfectly valid point. As things come up, we are trying to be consistent and trying to quote unquote fix them or update them or whatever word you want to use. So this just happened to come up and Ashley happened to catch this just because it came in front of us, right? And then so we started looking into other leases. And I knew that the Ag Department or Ag Building had one because I'd worked on it. It's not called a lease, whatever document that addresses that. I know for sure the guardian ad items. I am 99% sure of the public defenders. I mean, it's the state, they are very, not that things don't slip through the cracks, but I believe, yep, miss, the HR is nodding yes. And it's very specific even to the point of how much space we give them for storage. So we do have other leases such as this for the office. It's just a matter of finding the ones that need updated or finding the ones that we don't and then just trying to move those forward.
I think we have some background to do. Danielle?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. In your packet, you should have received a memo from me respectfully requesting that the Board of County Commissioners consider adding an additional holiday for employees. The past two years, we have granted an additional holiday. This year is difficult with holidays because the actual holiday falls on a Thursday for both Christmas and New Year's Day. I have spoken to a couple of different electeds and department heads. And if the commission were to grant an additional holiday, we would request that it be Friday, the 26th, to allow employees for a four-day weekend. Last year, we closed on Christmas Eve, so that gave us Tuesday, Wednesday off, I believe. But just thinking about it and talking through logistics and operations, being closed a Wednesday, Thursday, coming back for Friday and then being closed Saturday, Sunday, isn't the most effective. So that is the request and I'll open it up for any questions.
Past experience, not just in this life, but in previous ones, seems like we were going to have a skeleton crew. For the most part, if any, they'll show up on the 26th. So I, I personally don't have any issue with granting an additional holiday, but I would like a little discussion on that. Commissioner Laird?
I think it's a really good idea.
Commissioner Coats?
Why don't we just make this a normal thing instead of doing this every year?
Because it depends on where it falls in, within the week.
It depends. Last year, we actually gave a floating because it didn't fall right after on Friday. We've done this in the past, but we've adjusted it almost every year to, to fit the calendar a little better. Some days it's the 24th, some days it's 26th, so. Any other discussion? Commissioner Coats?
Danielle and Tracy, so would we consider just doing a floating holiday in December every year just so we wouldn't have to do this every year? What's your thoughts on that?
Commissioner Coats, to be honest, I don't have anything to do with setting the holidays. It's all done between the county clerk. So I'll let Tracy answer that one.
I don't want to answer that one. I mean, maybe that's logistically something we could look at next year when we set the, when we set the resolution for the holidays, certainly. If that's the desire of the board, I think it would be great for the employees. But again, logistically, it, it would be up to the department heads and the electeds as far as their staff is concerned to grant that. So I don't foresee any problems with it as of now.
So let me do, ask you this question though. What about the individuals that do have to work on the 26th? You know, or do they have a flex? We need to address that if that's, that they need to be able to take that flex that day sometime within a week or something of that nature.
So the department heads and the electeds do work around that. So for example, if road and bridge, we get a big snowstorm and everybody's got to come in and plow, they take their extra holiday at another time.
Well, I just want to make sure that if we're going to do this, I don't have any problem with it, but we just need to make sure that we've got arrangements established for those that can't take that because they have to work, they're on the schedule or something else. And the detention center and Sheriff Department are two prime examples, so that are scheduled on that day. So I just want to make sure that we've got that covered.
Which again, would be up to the department head or the elected to make those arrangements for the employees and make sure that that is granted to all of their employees.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions about that or any other recommendations? We need a vote.
Make a motion to grant the extra holiday day this year.
Second? Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not done.
Sure. See how you are.
So I've been tasked to ask the harder question. Respectfully, I would like to ask the commission to entertain the notion of a bonus as well. Given the current, current, current climate and the budget issue that we may be facing or will be facing next year possibly. Last year, the commissioners granted a $650 bonus to all benefited, benefited full and part-time employees. I'm not asking for that amount. I'm asking, requesting respectfully again that you would approve a $250 bonus to all benefited employees and part-time benefited employees. The cost to the county would be $85,500. That includes taxes and that would include bonuses for the fair and the library employees as well. What we were hoping to do would have this go towards maybe some holiday meals for our employees. We looked at perhaps gift cards, so on and so forth, but those all have to be taxed as well. They have to be, you know, added to their, their W2s at the end of the year. So given everyone's different tax brackets, we feel a $250 bonus, they would receive a minimum of $175 after all the applicable taxes are taken out. So we feel that would be a great help for Christmas meals or, you know, just a little bit of help. I don't expect anything like we did last year. And being the chief budget officer, this is really hard for me to sit here and ask, but I also value our employees and know that we need to start, that employees need to come first working down. So that is why I'm asking, thank you.
Commissioner Laird?
Why, why would, why would we, why did we give them $650 and then would, and only give them $250 this year?
Mr. Chairman, based on budget restraints, if you will, or the last year that cost to us was over $222,000. So I was trying to reduce that burden a little and still maybe offer our employees something.
Well, I think it ought to be at least $500 to each employee.
Again, Mr. Chairman.
They don't net that. I mean, they, we gave them, I think we gave them the $650, so they've net $500.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird. But again, given the circumstances we are under and also you approved the cost of doing a wage study countywide, which I greatly appreciate. So I didn't want to be greedy, if you will. I was just trying to get both pieces of the pie, I guess, if you will.
I appreciate you looking after the county's money the way you do. I, on the other hand, would like to give them $500 for Christmas. I just think it's a nice number, it's less than last year. I think we can afford it, can't we?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I am not the treasurer.
What would be your guess?
Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I would guess that we would have funds. Again, I'm not the treasurer.
Well, you know as much as some treasurers know, I know that much. Anyway, gentlemen, that's my feeling.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to grant a $250 bonus to employees. That'd be a gross bonus to the benefited full and part-time employees.
Second? So have you got a limitation on part-time employees or what are your definitions? Okay, okay, all right. Sorry, I, I didn't hear your entire motion, that's the reason why I asked. So, okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate Commissioner Laird's willingness to do more. I would like to as well. I think we all value our, our employees. I, I think that this is the appropriate place still for the county to be this year.
Commissioner Laird, I do appreciate your turn. I appreciate Tracy and Danielle's concern to bring this before us. I do think that things have been a little tighter this year for several reasons. We've had major construction issue or not issues, but concerns that we've had to cover. And we've got a lot of other costs as well as losing about $2.6 million in revenue this year. So that, things add up and everything's a lot more expensive than it has been. I would love to be able to give our employees a little bit more, but I just don't think it's possible at this point in time without affecting other, other areas. So with that, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Can I ask you two a question?
Sure.
So I know that counties, all governments alike right now are struggling to retain employees. We compete with the private sector and we also compete with different places to live and. different places to live and maybe more attractive places to families. So, with regards to the wage study, where are we at right now? An update would be fantastic.
Um, with the wage study, they are getting ready to send it out to our peers, um, and then we're starting phase three of the process where we're gonna start going through, um, some of the different jobs, and it's called a safe, um, evaluation. They're gonna teach us how to do the wage study in-house, how to keep it up, um, for the future, so. Um, we still expect it. It's still on the timeline to be finished by January thirty-first, um, so that's where we're at.
Thank you for the update. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, okay. Under Commissioner Milne's recommendation, I'll quit asking. All right, um, discussion. Commissioner, discussion items. One thing Commissioner Nicolaisen, uh, brought up, and I do agree, is that we need to make a decision on what, if, if we're going to take a position on the Seminole pumping project, and if we are what that is, and it looks like Lita wants to say something about that.
I mean, I don't know if I want to, but I will. Just joking. We printed off at the, excuse me. See, just earlier today, right before the meeting, I was able to send an email, and you might not have had a chance to look at it, with the letter that Converse, excuse me, Carbon County sent for a comment slash objection, and I will go, there are two of them. And I do want to thank Carbon County Attorney's Office for working with me and getting us the information we need, so I don't have to reinvent the wheel, hopefully. And I will pass those out, so I just wanted you all to keep that in mind as a template or whatever y'all decide to do.
And I did forward to everybody, for your, for your casual reading, the, uh, PIS, that's about three hundred and twelve pages long. It gives a little bit more information. Tristan Rice is working on this and working with Carbon County on some of this too, so. Gives us a little bit more information. Commissioner Nicolaisen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm just reviewing these, uh, comment letters from Carbon County for the first time now. It looks like they list a number of substantive concerns. I'm not sure if there are also procedural concerns, but we heard from, um, John Masterson, and I've talked to some of the fly, North Flat River Fly Fishing Guides. Think there are serious potential consequences, and I think those are negative, uh, at least the ones that I've heard about for our wildlife and for, well, and fish, uh, and, um, just habitat in general, and for the sheep population in that immediate vicinity. I, I think even though this is in Carbon County, the impacts are significant enough that Neptuna County, uh, should submit a comment. My understanding, although this isn't a legal opinion, my understanding is comments would be due before January first, so there is kind of some time sensitivity to this. At this point, at the very least, I think we would have concerns about, um, either a lack of information, and maybe we have some substantive concerns that, that we can work with legal counsel on over the course of the next few weeks. I think we should draft the letter.
Any other? I'm, I'm gonna support that a hundred percent. I do believe that we need to draft a letter as far as detailed specifics go. Wildlife concerns, critical wintering range for the sheep or in that area. Obviously, the fisheries are another concern, and there's, there's a large gamut of items that this is definitely could have negative impact. You know, not only for ourselves, but for the safety of the sportsmen in the, in the state too, drawing the water down and bringing it back up that much in a twenty-four hour period is definitely going to have, uh, a major effect on Seminole. I do think that that, that is, there are some things that we definitely can't address, and I think we need to work on, on doing that, so. Commissioner Laird.
Yeah, this one's given me a few nightmares, and, uh, I just happen to be of the mindset that I don't like the idea that it will interfere with the fishing or the wildlife in the area, but I think it has other negative impacts. It's kinda like, in my opinion, it's kinda like these, uh, wind turbines. I flew over them Sunday, and I didn't realize how many were out there. And how many of them weren't operating, and then I thought about the two thousand acres of those Chinese machines setting out there, so some rich guy back in Wyoming, or back in Miami can make money, and how those would end up being a problem in the Wyoming wind and for Wyoming animals, so. My thinking is, is that I think my job is to protect our people and their way of life in Wyoming, and to, which incidentally is that we protect our wildlife, our, our fishing, our hunting, and our people, and so, uh, I'd like to send them a, a very good letter with a really strong letter that follows that. Unless somebody can show me something differently, because I just don't think that some of these projects that are, have come in front of us have been, have been or would be helpful to the people of the state of Wyoming.
Commissioner Milne.
Trying to make it short and sweet here, um. I, I agree. We should have concerns on this. There are a lot of ramifications of actual, um, issues. It may be long-term or, or completely devastating. We've got ag downstream, we've got the wildlife, we've got different, different, uh, industries downstream from them that may all be affected by this. So is a concern, yes. There, yes. Should we let them know that we have concern, yes. But I'm not going to take a lead eye angle at this. I don't know what I don't know, and while we should voice our concerns about this project, I wanna hear from Bureau of Rec, I wanna hear from the project manager and the company, I wanna hear from all these people. Decision of absolutely no.
So.
So, but yes, I'm in favor of sending a letter of, of concern to them. Um, yeah, and with a request that they get in front of us and let us know what is going on with this project, what are the concerns? The Bureau of Rec should have, you know, be well involved. The, um, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's already involved. I'd like to hear from them. I'd like to hear from everybody before we just put a stamp on it of no. It's my opinion.
I, I have a question. We can't stop this, can we? I mean, we can't say no, and it's like some of the other things in the county. We don't stop it. We can just simply say what we've said here today, and maybe the people can stop it. I don't know what our state government is saying about it at this point, but I do agree that Jim, that we should know more. I'd like to know more about it. I'd like to know what the reasoning is to do it in the first place. And how does it affect not only Wyoming, but other areas as well? But so far, I haven't heard any of that. I'm sure it exists, that information exists. I just, I just haven't found it or haven't applied it. And yet, I don't think we're, I don't think we're voting on anything right now, other than to just send. At least I'm thinking we're sending our, what we think, uh, we believe, uh, how it could adversely affect our citizens, and we really I'd say every one of us are against that, if it's a negative effect.
Jim, let me ask you this. Would you letter supporting Car- Carbon County's response, or would you like something?
I'd have to have more opportunity to read the letter, honestly.
Okay.
I don't know what it says quite.
Okay.
It's just got a little bit.
All right, yeah. Um, we do have until the first of January to get something submitted.
I, I, I I definitely have your answer to you, whether I can support this or not.
So.
By that, by the next meeting.
The next meeting will be fine, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, um, I would like to have legal, um, get the body of a, well, get, get at least the form of a letter put together. We can review what Carbon County submitted and see if we adopt that in full or in part. But I think some of our concerns are gonna be distinct and different than Carbon County's, especially as they relate to downflow uh, economic and environmental impact. I, again, I think like Commissioner Milne, we need to digest these, these letters in front of us, but I think we're gonna have something more subs- uh, something in addition, uh, of substance to say, um, that impacts the people of Neptuna County, so I think maybe it could turn into kind of a hybrid where we opt in some of it, uh, from Carbon County, but we also put in a few paragraphs of our own on, on some of the things that, uh, John Masterson touched on, at least those areas of concern.
There was, there was some information, and I don't know if I misunderstood, but this is a closed-loop system. So, the intake and discharge are both back into lake, into Seminole itself, not into Cordis. And so that, that does make a big difference as far as how much flow is gonna be coming down. It's just basically turning it back over into Seminole, so that does. To me, that changed a little bit of the complexion of it, but, uh, I do think that we need to read through this and, and decide, you know, what we really wanna do. Bring it up, so that we had the opportunity to, to at least discuss it, and we can, we can come up with a, a better conclusion on our, at our next meeting, so. Yeah, you're very good with that. Okay.
Would you be able to do some sort of rough, rough outline, sketch, draft thing that Peter is talking about?
Yes, thank you.
By next, uh, meeting.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is that, yes, or?
Yes, thank you. Yes, yeah, well, thank you for asking as well. Yes, thank you for asking as well. That's great. Thank you. We will.
Okay, investment committee. Two. Go. Okay.
All righty, uh, we had an investment committee meeting the other day, um, kind of go over where we were to address some, um, issues and whatnot. I'm just gonna give you some highlights, really. What I would say is, is that, uh, our portfolio is, is healthy at this time. Um, there doesn't, there's any problems, but stock. Investment being what investment is. Um, with PFM, and I'm sure if I, if I get anything wrong, Joan or Troy will let me know. But, uh, the port, with PFM, the portfolio has twenty-three percent of the portfolio invested in zero-to-one-year area yield curves. Um, this is to, uh, provide liquidity and reduce risk sales prior to maturity. Approximately eleven percent of the portfolio is invested in corporate notes. Um, if you remember, we adopted the twenty percent of the portfolio could be invested in, uh, investment grade, uh, corporate securities, and at this time, like I said, eleven percent, that leaves a lot of cap there, uh, for maneuvering around if they find a good deal or not, without, uh, jeopardizing the portfolio. Out three percent of the corporate bonds are rated as triple B category. I will, uh, there was a concern about that. Casper was used as an example. Casper does have triple B and whatnot, uh, investments, uh, so. It, we're in line with what city's doing as well. Uh, triple B does provide, uh, a little bit. Bonds are, are about zero point zero eight percent compared to zero point zero six percent for A-rated bonds. So, they're, they're keeping a very close eye on those, though, for us. Um, they do have, instead of just going with, uh, one percent of, of the same, uh, bonds or whatnot, that our portfolio contains twenty-two separate corporate holdings, um, so with the minimum or, uh, average concentration of point five percent, which helps eliminate some of the risk to us, um. So, the for- portfolio, uh, it does compare favorably to the benchmarks out there, uh, or, and the other county funds that we have, uh, out there with PFM and, and class, uh, and obviously, I am speaking only on the hospital funds. Said eleven percent of the corporate funds, uh, is it, not the max twenty percent. Uh, the county's portfolio is, uh, in June, end of June was, uh, four point one-four percent comparison to the zero to five treasury benchmark. That's PFM, uh, class is a little different. They're not running corporate bonds. Um, our hospital funds are in, in with the class. The yield on that is, uh, four point one eight seven percent. Year-to-date for those funds, uh, over, uh, one million dollars, uh, income earned on that. One point two, almost. See if I got anything else scheduled on. Um, like I said, for, up to, it's around about four point one to four point two percent daily yield, basically. See what else. Charity Alice on that, it's, uh, combined hundred percent, zero to five year, uh, ninety-one percent in, uh, AAA, mainly, uh, like the federal, uh, home loan bank and, and the like there. Yeah, that's about it. Um, and on that point, like I said, it's, it's currently in a very healthy, uh, position for those funds and for, for, uh, retain, utilizing that, uh, principal and gaining interest off of it, so. That is what actually, uh, a good comment as far as we've, we've well made back the money that, that was ever lost with WowStar. We're in much stabler, financially responsible position with the county's money at this point than we were when we were with the state. I don't care what they say, um, we were in a bad, bad position when we moved those funds. And it was, it would have been irresponsible to leave them where they were, um, and, and by they, I mean the state people. Um, with that, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm careful with what I'm about to do. I'm going to step away from the board to help follow the policy, uh, that we have instituted within the county. There's supposed to be one person from each different election cycle on that board in order to maintain continuity of, of the information, the historical knowledge of this board. So there you go.
Sure goes.
Jim, would you mind, um, not to second guess you, but you mind staying on until after the first year when we do, when we do, I guess, board decisions, uh, through that point in time? I don't believe you guys will probably meet anytime between now and then. Would you mind until then and then we can follow on just to maybe?
That's y'all's decision. I, I don't mind staying on. We weren't, we weren't planning to have another meeting until, uh, end of, uh, year anyways, so. And then it will be about a month or s- two after that, because they'll still be getting the numbers for end of year, for that end of quarter. So it, it's up to you guys. I, I don't care when we're done.
At this point in time, that's, I don't have any problems with that, so. We don't have a month. So, okay.
Damn it.
It, it, it is delayed. All right. Opioid recommendations and Epsom.
Mr. Chairman, uh, in our packet, we have a copy of an October 29th memo, uh, from Eric Nelson, Laura Trammell, and the opioid task force members. Uh, the task force consisted of city council members, Gamrus, and Askins, and Commissioner Coats, and myself, and our, um, non-public official Carol King. We have recommended funding of just over $1 million to five different agent, not agencies, but organizations. The county's share of that would be just over $500,000. The county has received to date, uh, just over $1.5 million, and the city is about the same. So there's just a little more than $3 million total. And the committee felt that, um, instead of spending, uh, or allocating all $3 million, that it would be more prudent to allocate $1 million for this coming fiscal year. Actually, it wouldn't be the coming fiscal year. It would be, um, effective after adoption by the city and the county. And we would then have, uh, in a year, some addition, another request for proposal, and some of these same entities or, uh, organizations would probably resubmit. Maybe they tweak their, you know, proposals based on what worked well, what didn't work well. And, uh, we would anticipate having, um, going through the process again with the committee, interviewing and making recommendations for an additional expenditure, uh, basically 12 months from now. But the ask, uh, today is for a, um, approval of the, um, recommended allocations. That would be $372,000, uh, to One Nitrona, $255,000, $236 to UW Family Practice, $173,000 to Drug Court, um, $100,000 to Salvation Army, and $100,000 to WBI. The ca- again, the county's share of that would be half of each of those amounts. We, uh, were very pleased, I think in general, with the, uh, breadth and creativity of the, um, applicants. Um, we were very impressed by, uh, the various, uh, interviews that we conducted. And we feel comfortable that the utilization of the funds as recommended will, um, not only comply with the terms of the opioid settlement agreement, but also, um, do good for our community. So I'll stop there. Are there any questions for me? And I know Commissioner Coats is, uh, ready to answer any questions as well, and, and you may also have some additional to add to that.
Commissioner Coats.
Yeah, these, the organizations that we, um, received RFPs from were very well represented. They, um, demonstrated the impact that opioids have had on our community. Presentations they provided really, uh, gave us the opportunity to look at how opioid funds can best be used to affect, uh, multiple segments of our community. The amounts that we decided on are, are definitely geared toward continuation of, of, uh, the opioid task force and what good it can do for more than just, just one year or, or the short term for just some certain programs. This will really allow us to, uh, dial in what works and what, what doesn't work. So. Yeah, I think these, these are all very good programs to support.
Any other questions? So. Want to?
Sure.
Go ahead, Jim.
Actually, I, I kinda do, and, and you kinda answered, kinda not. Try to get it squared away in my brain. So where is? Where, where, where's our goal down the road?
So, um, it is somewhat of a, um, the overall vision is to improve opioid out, opioid impacted outcomes in the community. So, um, that's kind of a moving target. Opioid impacts can be anything from individuals to families. And so, um, you know, the goal is to maximize, get the best value we can for the community through these, um, you know, through some, you know, some of our partnering organizations here. And so, um, by spreading this, spreading this wealth out among these different groups, we can see, you know, everyone has a, everyone that applied to this has a really good, uh, idea, and they can implement. They, we know they can. And so, but we want to see where the results, what the results are in a year. And so if they reapply and say, hey, we've, you know, we've demonstrated, uh, that we've been really fiscally responsible, our stewardship of those funds have been good, and really allowed us to improve our capacity, then there would be no reason why we wouldn't want to continue that. But on the, you know, on the other side, if we have someone come back and say, yeah, we know the, or if we see that maybe that the funding, um, wasn't used to the maximum benefit, or, you know, the benefit wasn't, you know, as robust as we were hoping, maybe somebody else can make better use of the funds the next round.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we're proposing to utilize approximately 1/3 of the total amount the county's received. And, um, like Commissioner Coats said, you know, some of it is directed toward, at the educational piece. Some of it is very treatment-focused, and some of it is, um, you know, helping people, you know, who, and their families who have been directly impacted by, um, basically the opioid, the opioid, um, situation in our county. There would be agreements entered into with each of the recipients for utilization consistent with their proposal, uh, and for reporting requirements, uh, back, both in writing and orally back to, um, the county and the city, uh, through the course of the year.
Do we need to add this to the consent agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I think that'd be a great idea, um, although.
If we, if we don't have any.
Just do that right now.
Okay, alright, okay.
Commissioner Coats?
Yes, I'd make the motion to add the opioid task force recommendations on distribution of opioid settlement funds to the consent agenda.
No, 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 that's not what she was saying. She was saying just make a motion now to approve it.
I'll just make the motion to approve the opioid task.
That way we don't have to hold on it.
Yes, consistent with the memo issued by the city of Casper and opioid task force.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Coats, second by Commissioner Nicholason. Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Okay, so moved. Alright. I'm going to give you a chance for legal updates before we go into executive session, so I make sure that I get it this time.
Thank you. So first, I mean, no one ever wants to say that they are speaking on behalf of everyone else, but I think I can say that on behalf of the county employees, thank you so much. I did not clear this by them or run this by them, but thank you so much for the bonus as well as the day off. I know times, budgets are tough for everybody. And let's see, we are in the midst of getting our title commitments back, and we are working on the Fener order. We had our new legal assistant start this week, and she's great. I hope she's a good fit. I believe she will be, and we haven't had any issues. I think she'll catch on quickly. Let's see, we are, we, by we, I mean Kale and Danae, have been working hard on our tracking system, so to speak. So hopefully, we can get that up and running to where it's useful to everybody. And that's about it. We're the Hendry, what we're calling the Hendry easements. The ranch is taking a look up, and then it will come back to you all, or come in front of you all, I guess. The planning and zoning regulations, the draft, it's going, they are going in front of the Planning and Zoning Board tomorrow night. Ashley, our dedicated planning and zoning attorney, will be there at the meeting. We've been working on a lot of public records requests. And everything else, I don't have anything else. Unless Ashley, did we miss anything? Well, I guess that's not true. So, uh, we, we, the file and serve system, where we e-file court pleadings, and in particular, we deal with a lot of Title 25s that received an update this week. And so it's taken up a lot of time, and it's a little frustrating, but that's for everybody. So Ashley's been spending a lot of time over at the clerk's office and working with all of us, just trying to get the system figured out, so we can file documents in a timely fashion.
Alright. Commissioner Nicholason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Council Resolution 4525A regarding the roads in Vista West 1. The change was a reservation, um, for access, a reservation by the county, not the, not the subdivision, I believe, right?
Correct.
Is that, uh, going to be in our consent packet as amended?
Yes, so originally, the amended resolution addressed two items that were inadvertently left out before it was filed. They weren't in there. And then upon further review, it was brought to my attention that I had made a mistake and stated Vista West 1 versus the county, and that has been changed, and that is on the consent agenda with those three changes. Adding the reserved easement, adding that Vista West 1 shall work with the appropriate officials regarding the lock and the gate, and then I made the change that I screwed up.
Alright. If legal doesn't have any more updates, then I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of legal advice and property acquisition.
So moved.
You have a second?
So seconded.
So seconded.
Okay, we have a motion on the second, motion by Commissioner Coats, second by Commissioner Laird. All in favor? Say aye. Alright, we are now in executive session.
So, all right, we're now out of executive session. We did make a decision to move forward on a property acquisition um according to the appraised value. And that was it. We don't have anything else. And so we will be in recess until five thirty. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Do we have any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Yes, I need to start my computer real quick. Unless somebody else wants to make it, it's an amendment to the consent agenda for the indigent section five. I don't have name on it right now.
Commissioner Mill and commissioners, if we could just have an amendment on the regular agenda, item five for indigent applications to include case number NAC 2025-193.
That would be the motion I make.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mill, seconded by Commissioner Nicholson. All in favor of the addition to the consent agenda?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mill to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Nicholson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, at this time, we will open the hearing for resolution 48-25 regarding the establishment of County Road CR 402 as a county highway by prescription. At this point, may we have staff report?
Thank you and good evening, commissioners. I guess it's evening already. This resolution presented to you is the final resolution to establish what's known as Bates Creek is a and and there's been some concerns about the lingo used, the statutory language is county highway, and that's what we're doing. I know that we all use county road and our signs say county roads, and it is a county road, but legally and for all of the official pleadings and paperwork, it's referred to as a county highway as outlined, delineated very clearly in the statutes.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Mike, do you need to add anything to that? Okay, all right. At this point, we will open up for those who wish to speak in favor of resolution 48-25 regarding the establishment of County Road CR 402 as a county highway as prescribed, please approach the electorate. All right, for the second time, any of those who wish to speak in favor of the resolution 48-25 regarding the establishment of County Road 402, approach the electorate. For the third time, all those in favor of the resolution 48-25 regarding the establishment of County Road 402 as a county highway and prescribed as by prescription, please approach the electorate. All right, hearing none. All those that wish to speak against the resolution 48-25 regarding the establishment of County Road CR 402 as a county highway by prescription, please approach the electorate. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Justin Johnson, 16,000 State Highway 487, Casper, Wyoming 82604. Yeah, I have a lot of concern about it. You know, which we kind of talked a little bit back there, but you know, what what are we going to gain by it? You know, what's really the intention of it? I mean, basically, you're driving right through my yard, and they already drive too fast on the gravel road anyways. You know, the safety concerns of it, stuff like that. They've already hit livestock on all about every rancher up through there, so you pave, it's gonna be a big big, uh, big worry to that. You know, who's who's doing this, you know, a big responsible of it, as everybody knows, cow business is pretty good right now, you know, 3,000 to 5,000, $6,000 animals, so. You know, who's gonna, who's gonna warrant that speed limit if it if it did turn into a paved highway? I'm not gonna bash the sheriffs or anything, but there ain't enough guys out there now. They drive way too fast up in front of my house. You know, it's supposed to be 25 miles an hour, and they go at least double that all the time. So that's a, that's a major concern, you know, kids and family and people around there like that. I mean, just turn it on to the county road, you know, a piece of equipment or just my pickup in the mornings or something, so. Another pretty safety, be pretty worried about it. Like I said, you know, it's gonna have to be a lot more better maintained than just that gravel road, too, if you guys decide to pave it up through there or whatever. You know, a lot more fencing, a lot more money. You know, I'm, as a kid, was a pretty avid hunter and stuff like that. I know what the making the better access to Muddy Mountains done for the hunting. It's ruined the hunt. People are all over it all year round. I mean, when we were kids, there were deer, elk everywhere. My brother rode up there for the last three or four months, and he's seen three nice deer. I mean, you could do it anytime when a junior hire or that you could go up there, so. You know, some of them guys hunt up there for to live in and offset their income, and there's nothing there to hunt, so. You know, just a few things concerned about it. Obviously, in my opinion, there's a lot better things we could do with our tax dollars than pave the road up through Bates Creek for sure, so. I appreciate your time. I'm gonna leave this with you.
Then she'll get copies to us.
Yeah, thank you for the time, and I sincerely hope you wrote that deal down, because that's not a good idea at all. Thank you.
Commissioner Nicholson had a question for you.
So I, I know your concerns are safety of you and your livestock and the speed already going through there. I'm, I'm not aware of any plans to improve, especially pave that road. Is that, is that correct? We're just we're just trying to make it more legal that the county actually has the right.
I kind of know, I kind of know what it's about, you know, the elephant in the room type deal that we can allow access or whatever, but we sure want to nip it in the bud that we're not going to turn it into CY Avenue.
Yeah.
The people that live there in the ranchers, like I said, some of them deals, you cut, cut some of our neighbors off the water, and it's, you know, it's just it's not, not a good idea, but yeah, thank, thank you for addressing that for sure.
Yeah, make sure you consider that.
There is, there is.
Any more of an opinion, right there, get hold of me.
Yeah, I don't think anybody up here is gonna disagree with the fact that paving it is not an option, and that's not even anything that we're even remotely considering or have considered. It's just a matter of taking care of the legality and making sure we have all the legal access all across. So.
Well, I appreciate the time.
Commissioner Mill.
Stick around. Some conversation with Mike in a little bit, and hopefully that'll answer some of your questions.
Okay, I will. Yep, thank you, guys.
Anyone else that wants to speak up against resolution 48-25?
My name's Steve Garrett. I'm representing Garrett Ranch, and like I was talking to Commissioner North, that's an old stagecoach route with all the wagons and stuff, and they went to every water hole. And when they come into my place, all the water's on one side of the road, and all the grazing is on the other side of the road. Cattle and pavement do not get along. Can't fence it because it'd make my place pretty much worthless. And I was also concerned about the easement. On a county road, it's 60 foot wide at the minimum, but on a highway, it's 120 foot. On a highway, it's a hundred and twenty foot. Shoot, that takes some of my water out because it's right on the edge because that old wagon road went right to every water hole to water the teams. If you name it a highway, everybody's GPS, all of our tourists and all that are gonna, oh, look at this scenic highway. We can go to Box Elder, Medicine Bow in the dead of winter and they're gonna be up there stranded and stuck. We got way too many people up there now. I would really like to see it just stay as a county road. So when it comes up on the GPSs and everything else, it's a county road, not a highway. Because in my mind, highway is paved.
Commissioner Nicolason.
I hear your concern. The statute doesn't say county road, it says county highway. So it's a label that for, from a legal perspective, we have to follow this procedure and advertise it as a highway. It's not gonna show up on Onyx or GPS or the county website as a highway. It's gonna continue to be labeled as County Road four oh two. It's not gonna be paved and we're not gonna be able to expand the right of way to anything wider than what it already is. So I appreciate your concern, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Jenny Johnson, Bates Creek, one six, one four five, State Highway four eighty-seven. So we continue to share our concerns and it's really about for our cattle, for us and whatever. You continue to say that you're not, you're just changing your following. What we don't understand is what are you gaining by changing this? So why change it? If you're not gaining anything, then why are we changing it? And I know about the Circle Drive, very, was very part of the Circle Drive problem. And we do have acts, have given everybody legal access, we've never tried, we're all family. There's, I mean, we're homesteaded there, these are all these ranches that have been there forever. We've gotten along really, really well. So what we're asking is, what are you gaining? What is the statute that's staying this? What's gonna change? And I'm not talking about today, I'm not talking about twenty years. What's going to change if we call this a highway?
The highway is like Commissioner Nicolason said, that's basically what the statute says we have to call it. That's all it amounts to. As far as gaining stuff, there are areas in some of our, on some of our county roads where we did not have a legal easement across. What we're doing is we're cleaning up those easements, that's really all it amounts to. And by doing this, this is, this is only one of several roads that we're looking at. It just happens to be
Our road.
The one right now, but it's not the last one that we're looking at, there are several others. We have a whole list of county roads that we have to do the same thing for. There were some things that came up a couple of years ago that we weren't aware of. And that's when we found out that some of these areas, even though the roads had been there well over a hundred years, there was no recorded easement.
Yeah, so, and we have that, that there isn't a recorded, that was in our letter, that there is no recorded easement.
And so that's basically what it amounts to. Is that all this, all this doing is giving the county that easement.
And so then what does the county gain for that? To have easement? And when we talk about maintaining, does that mean that the county will now maintain? Because nobody's been maintaining that road, we do. We maintain it. We plow it, we feed all the cattle on that road in the winter.
I'll have to defer to Mr. Hagler on that as far as when we quit doing maintenance on those roads and stuff like that. But that's, it is a county road, so yes, we will be maintaining it. And that's basically all it amounts to, it's just changing, it's just making that whole road be a county road. That's really all it amounts to.
Oh, I know, but if it, there's has to be a gain, something for them to change, for to change it.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think it's just a matter of perspective, but what the county gains is it protects the people that have the right to get in and out of that road in the future from getting shut down with threats of a bulldozer or, you know, it just cleans it up. Because you, like I, have easements going across our road, but where there's a, there's a right, but it's not defined because it's not recorded, because it's not surveyed, we're cleaning it up. And so it's not only a benefit to the county and the public and the emergency services and all that, but, but to the person that owns the land, so they know exactly where that road runs. And so they know exactly where, they can say, this is the line, the edge of the right of way. And so it does help the landowners out too across whose property this, this.
But we all, I mean, but we do know because it's Johnson and then Rhodes and then Shook and then Garrett. I mean, we, we're all very well associated with each other of where our roads and where our lines are in the easement. So when we say to give people access, we're the access. And we're, we've never not let a hunter go or wherever. And we've pulled many people out, have saved many people who have been up there, the Titans, the commercial trucks that go up and down and get stuck and we have to go get tractors and get them out. We have done plenty on our part to give easement and so I just don't see how it's benefiting us.
All right, anyone else that wants to speak out against resolution forty-eight twenty-five? And for the third time, anyone that wishes to speak against resolution forty-eight twenty-five regarding the establishment of County Road four oh two as a county highway by prescription, please come to the lectern. All right, seeing none, this hearing is now closed. I will entertain discussion or a motion. We can do it, we can discuss first or we can have a motion first, if you want to discuss it first, that's fine.
Well, I'd like to discuss it first. I don't like the idea either. I have to admit, I haven't read the statute. Because there is a difference in my mind between a county road and a county highway, what could, how it could be interpreted down the line. That bothers me. Like, I can't give you that answer myself right now. I don't know if our county attorney can explain this statute a little better. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I
Sorry.
When, when all the people who live on the area come in here and say they don't want this done, then that tells me some things. We did have a problem here, you guys probably read about a newspaper where somebody took it upon themselves to close down a county road and put their bulldozer there and all kinds of things and we had but we finally got it straightened out legally. And we don't want to have to go through that kind of thing again, but I don't like the difference between a county road and a county highway because it does make an implication that if I had a ranch out where you all do, I wouldn't want that designation on that particular road. And furthermore, I don't know that we're required to do this either. That's what I'm hoping the county attorney might be able to tell me, if there's some requirement that we have to do this.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Laird, Chair. Okay, so to put some context to this, I don't think it's any secret that the county has been working on legally establishing their roads since, for a long time. The issue which was public, the litigation with Circle Drive, I reinforced the importance of that, at least, I mean, it's your all's call, not mine, but reinforced the importance of that. So once we were through the transition of the change in the legal department and we were fully staffed, we began working that on roads again. And this particular road, we had concerns about as well, we wanted to avoid any litigation, we have a whole list of roads. Squaw Creek we're working on, we're working on other roads, the same, to become, to have our legal easements. And you all, the board does not have to obtain a legal easement. No, we hadn't had one on Bates Creek, Circle Drive, Squaw Creek for however many years. But the statute, the statute is very clear, it's called a public highway, I don't know why. I did a quick little search and highway is used in at least twenty-nine different chapters, excuse me, titles in the statute books, meaning different things. You know, it's not, you know, when you look at, say, some of the traffic code that talks about highways, highway is defined. That clearly is not the definition here. But that's something that the legislature, that's something for the legislature to deal with. I am guilty of using county road, just like all of us, but when it comes to legal documents and legal pleadings and as Commissioner Nicolason shared, we use the correct language. And unfortunately, it is confusing, it doesn't make sense, they contradict each other, but that's what the statute says. I'm obligated to follow the law, so. No, but you all do not have to, to obtain legal easements on any county road, that's up to you.
Well, so what's the status of it now? Does it provide for county roads, the term county roads in the statutes?
This statute does not. There are other statutes involving county roads that refer to them as roads. This statute, and in particular, the legislature outlined exactly what the notice should say that was sent, of course, to the newspaper and the property owners. And it refers, it's highway, it's very clear in this statute and this, it's highway. There are other statutes dealing with roads that use the word road.
Does it define what a road is as opposed to what a highway is?
No, in fact, if you, this statute for, this statute actually talks about public, let's see, state highways and county highways. That's what they distinguish between. They're not using the road in this particular, they're not using, referring to this as county roads in this particular statute and notice.
Well, in my mind, there's a difference between a road and a highway.
I don't necessarily.
I, I just believe there's a total difference between a road and a highway, so I can understand what all these folks are saying. So so why can't we designate it as a county road, why do we have to call it a county highway?
Because as your legal counsel, and I don't think this is a big secret, I've advised that we follow the statute. When our notice goes out, it follows the statute.
Well, what, is there a definition for county road in the statute somewhere?
Not to my knowledge with this particular adverse possession. I don't remember when I did the quick research and found the word highway in something like twenty-nine, twenty-nine titles of the statutes.
Who owns the road right now?
Right now, it's our, our position is, we own it, we've not legally established it. It's the same thing as Circle Drive and our position was Circle Drive. It's just that came to a head for the reasons it came to a head with litigation.
Mike, did you want to say something?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, let's back up a little bit, is this on? If you all recall, we did a road study, we applied for a grant a number of years ago and studied all our roads for surveys. Because we found out through numerous things, through banks, through lawyers, you name it, a piece of property sales, somebody finds out they don't have legal access. Casper Mountain's a good example. Our county roads fall into that same category. I call them roads, you know, statute calls them highways, I wouldn't get hung up on that. What you need to get hung up on, and these people are affected by it too, if we don't establish that road legally, because it wasn't, I mean, it was filed, but it wasn't filed right, wasn't used the right verbiage, whatever, and we found the proper way of doing it now, nobody has legal access. It's not a public road. And so we're trying to rectify that, we've worked with Rob Shook, we corridored up through his place, traded land that was his to ours because we didn't own that piece, we worked with Allen Rhodes. You know, as far as maintenance, we just put a brand new bridge in up there, nobody remembers that. We had a gravel pit out there, we gravelled all the way to that new bridge. When I came here twenty-two years ago, there wasn't any gravel on that road. We've done new cattle guards, totally new. So I'm shocked by what's being said back here, but as far as maintenance, we don't maintain that road past the first creek after winter. We have a little bit, but the power company's been plowing it. And I think one of the ranchers does that for the power company. But when they were up in there, you know, they were plowing their own way in and out, we, we haven't, you know, that's a tough road to plow in the winter. And I don't know if there's any cows up past there anyway, but.
So let me interrupt you a second, Mike, one of the things that they mentioned was people speeding out there.
That's true, that's true on every county road.
So right now, I think my recollection serves me right and one of the other commissioners remind me, I'm sure. I don't know that we could put a speed limit sign up there unless we designate this legally.
Well, the.
Or am I wrong on that?
The signs are all up, they're, I mean, all these roads are posted. The problem is they aren't recorded properly. You know, and the sheriff enforces the law when he's out there, but he can't be everywhere. I'll guarantee you, every road I drive every day, somebody goes by me at sixty miles an hour. And, you know, I can't do anything about that. And that kind of tells you the road's not that bad. You're gonna drive that fast. And when you're on a bad road, you don't drive that fast, I know I drive all of them. But it's easy to drive that fast. You know, that's back to an enforcement issue.
So you're recommending we do this, but you can also tell these folks nothing's gonna be paved, nothing's gonna be widened. It's not gonna change from the way it's been other than the maintenance that we do on it to keep it safe for them.
Right, and we intend to eventually get back in there and go back to that gravel pit and do more gravel. But, and there'll probably be a day that the lower bridge gets replaced as well, it's on the whiteout list. But as far as paving, I mean, we can't maintain the paved roads we have, let alone go pave new ones. And I don't see anywhere.
Well, it costs millions of dollars to pave it.
Millions of miles.
Yeah.
And it's more than that now.
And we don't have any intention of doing that, do we?
No, and it's not a through fair road in the winter, I mean, why would you pave a road you can't go anywhere on in the winter? I mean, it's just, that'd be like paving Big Horn Mountain Road, why would you do that? I mean, I'm not gonna recommend it, nobody here is gonna pay for it. We don't have those types of funding, there aren't grants for any of it and that'd be the last place I'd ever go with paving a road. We have roads that are paved that need to be upgraded, that handle a lot of traffic a day compared to what that road handles. And it's based off a traffic count. We have no intent, the intent is to rectify the filing of the road as a public road. And, you know, that we can guarantee the public and whether it's a ranch subdividing or somebody buying up a lot, that they have legal access. Because it comes up more and more and more. And, and they come to us and say, you know, prove it's a public road, well, we got some difficulties in that and it's been tested.
Well, I'm just trying to address all these folks' concerns. And I'm hoping we have addressed their concerns.
Yeah, there's, you know, that's not gonna ever get paved.
Thank you.
Okay, this, anybody else have any question?
That's true. Mike, so maybe so just reiterating and confirming, there are no plans future or anything else to try to widen that road or anything like that?
No, no.
No other monumental improvements to, or anything?
No. No.
Okay.
With clarification, it may get more gravel on it someday. So, I'll go get paved.
I mean, like, what happened over on Haygood's, just below where we were, and then Shook's place?
Yeah.
Um, as far as the name change, the concern for the highway, there won't actually be a name change. It'll still be Bates Creek Road.
Bates Creek County Road.
Yeah. It's not going to change on the maps or any, there's any, anything?
No, and here, you know, everybody has this concern, and it happens with Google. You know, that's a screwed-up system at times. And we call them all the time and try to get that corrected on things. We have semis end up on top of Big Horn Mountain Road. You know, they come off the interstate and end up up there. And, you know, it's, I don't know, when you leave paved road and get on a gravel road, you think you, you tell yourself, where am I? It doesn't happen. But we're never going to stop that. I mean, there are going to be people get lost up there, but it's not because it's a highway. It's because they don't even know where they're going. And Google has a tendency to lead people, I mean, it does it with ambulances. I've heard ambulances take roads that aren't even there and get lost because they depend up on that stuff. And, you know, that's just some common sense stuff. But, and I'm sure these folks have had people come into their ranches and say, hey, I'm lost. I know they have. And, you know, I run into people all the time and say, well, I ended up here because my map took me here, you know? Well, that's just common everywhere. But that has nothing to do with the way the road's labeled now. That's an application that's running that is wrong and has labeled things wrong.
In the future, as we adjust these other roads and whatnot that we have concerns with, the same thing is going to happen with the use of the word highway, correct?
As long as, I can't speak for other county attorneys. My appointment's for one year. As long as I'm the county attorney, I will follow the statute and the statutory language.
Okay, so if we followed the-
So, I can't-
If we followed, presuming that we follow the statute?
Yes.
So, any of it, like Squaw Creek, when we do that, it'll be Squaw Creek Highway for the letter and whatnot, but the name will stay?
County Road.
Yeah.
But sure as hell, somebody's going to see where it's been turned into a highway, and they're going to get up there thinking there's a highway, and then they're going to go beat on their doors, saying, where's this highway? There's something wrong with this name that bothers me. And I don't feel like we should be bound by calling this a highway. I understand what our county attorney's saying. However, I think we got to use some common sense here because you mentioned some truck driver will get up there and think, well, where's this highway? They said this was a highway up here. There's nobody going to, most anybody I know, when they hear highway and they hear road, they're thinking of two different things.
They aren't going to, with all due respect, Commissioner, they aren't going to hear that. How many people in this room have heard that?
They've all heard it, and they're all concerned.
They've heard because we sent them letters.
Yeah, but they're all concerned.
The general public doesn't even know this is happening. I mean, it's not going to show up on Google Map as a highway. I mean, your highway system's dedicated by YDOT. And that's basically what those maps run off of. What happens is, especially Circle Drive, is a truck driver sees the road shut down ahead, and he finds an, he puts in there, give me an alternate, and it shoots him up over the mountain, or vice versa. And that's, you know, you can't stop that. You know, it has nothing to do with the language. It's the application that's running, that's trying to take you around a detour that ends up having all these people get lost. And, you know, with snow, roads closed for snow or a wreck, you know, I've had them end up on Oregon Trail and go right by your house.
Yeah, I know, I've pulled one along.
And I can't stop that. I mean, that's an application that's running. And, you know, it gives them a detour. And yeah, it's a road, it's not a highway. And they find out real quick it's not a highway. I think the average person is not going to confuse this with a highway. The minute they turn off 487, they know they're not on a highway.
Mike, they won't confuse it when they see it, but they're going to confuse it until they see it. That's the problem.
I don't think it's going to be an issue.
I don't know, everybody in there thinks it's an issue.
Some of your questions get answered? Yes, no, maybe? Right, so, so in the future, somebody buys the property in question that doesn't have the easement, right? Steve needs to get up there to get some cows or whatever. Stock trail's socked in, ruined, washed out, whatever reason. So, he's coming around Bates Creek. But the road's been shut off. He's not allowing anybody, neighbor be damned, he's not allowing anybody through. At that point, what do you do? This is what we're trying to correct.
The fence paved that road. We didn't have anything to do with it.
That's the perspective we're coming from, is we're just trying to alleviate a future problem. It's not going to pave. It's not going to widen the easements. It's not going to do anything like that. It's just to keep access continuing that you currently have. I see what you're saying, put some conditions into it. I don't know, is that an option?
Obviously, I have not researched that issue. But, as you know, a current commission can't bind a future commission. And so, I mean, I don't think, go ahead.
Resolution, it kind of gives it some historical.
I mean, I don't know if that is the precedent that you want to set, and that falls under legal advice that I think should be in executive session. So, but that's what I have to say for this at this point. Thank you.
County Attorney, maybe we should table, have an executive session to consider this, whether we do have to call it a highway or not. Because I know that's what's bothering him, and I would like to see if that's a possibility because I, I just, I just don't, I just don't have the knowledge to say that we're, shackles on us by some goofy statute that somebody passed, that we don't have any authority to change the statute.
Commissioner Larick, thank you. You all are free to table this, as long as there's a motion and it passes. That's up to you all.
All right. It's, thank you, Mike. Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The statute, on its face, refers back to 1924. I, as an attorney in the real estate transactional business, I've been working with the statute, and I know that the word highway is odd. We're not changing the designation of this as a highway. We're following the statute, which says in order to create a public road by prescription or adverse possession, you have to call it a highway in your process. We don't have any discretion, in my humble opinion, on that. And I think that's what council's saying. Mr. Chairman, I think we've tried to address the concerns tonight. My opinion is that we followed the law, and therefore, I'd make a motion to establish County Road 402, also known as Bates Creek Road, as a county highway through the common law doctrine of prescription, and move for the adoption of Resolution 4828. The only thing I would say is, instead of shall establish County Road 402, I think it should read shall and hereby does establish. So, I would put in a comma after the word shall and insert the words and hereby does, comma, establish. That means that that would take the resolution to show that it is actually establishing it through the signature of this document. So, that's my motion, if it's clear.
Shall you get all that? Okay. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Nicolason, and a second by Commissioner Coates. Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Yeah, it's the last paragraph of the resolution.
All right. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Are you satisfied with that now? Okay, all right. So, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So, at this point in time, we will move on to public comment.
Rose Meryx, upon Natchona County resident. Well, you guys have voted, but I, you could, I guess, change this. But could you look at Statute 243206? Identification, effective identification. It's, I don't fully understand it. What I'd like to say is that Gillette passed a resolution for no nuclear waste storage. How do you guys feel about doing something like that since this all erupted in Natchona County? Peanuts?
It's nuclear waste storage in Wyoming, period.
I think the people would appreciate that. I think the people haven't gotten public comment, which really irritates me. I've expressed that. So, how about you opening up for public comment and seeing if the residents of Natchona County would appreciate a resolution?
We have it open for public comment right now.
Or to do a resolution?
This is our public comment. That doesn't mean that we're going to act on any public comment. It's open for public comment.
Okay. So, could you start the procedure for setting a time for public comment on whether the people would appreciate a resolution or not?
We're always willing to take and accept public comment, written or otherwise.
Well, Dave, how is it that Campbell County went ahead and did it? I know that you're in favor of it. I know that you denied public comment before. And you went and spoke before the minerals committee. And what really upsets me, and I'd like it on the public record, is that you'll point your finger at Mr. Nicolason over there for not allowing public comment, and then turn around and show hypocrisy by doing the same thing. It's, I don't think it's winning you any favors.
Let me make a comment here. To have a resolution, Rose, we would need to have a resolution, that we were going to pass a resolution to ban nuclear waste in Natchona County, and then advertise that, and then people would come in, just like on this road, and make their comment. I think that, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah. So, how do you guys feel about that? For the people?
I already told you how I feel.
I know how you feel. I think you're telling the people how you feel. Thank you.
All right, anybody else for public comment?
Ann Robinson, 1923 North Grass Creek Road, Casper, Ashley County. I'm sure you're all aware that you received an appeal to the resolution that you passed in regard to Grass Creek Road. The appeal was filed on October 5th. You also received a letter yesterday from an attorney who is representing several Vista West 3 owners that outlined the statutory requirements that you have not met with the resolution. One of those was mentioned that it got corrected today, which was, the resolution stated that Vista West 1 would reserve an easement for emergency vehicles to drive on Grass Creek Road. That was part of what needed corrected. There's more. I think it's a pretty sad situation when homeowners have to spend thousands of dollars to have you look at the statutes and see where some of your actions are deficient and correct them without having to go into litigation. During the hearing on October 7th, several of you kept citing words in the county regulations for subdivisions, and you were stating them incorrectly. I think maybe some of you might have looked at that since then and realized that that was an error. It was in reference to the word may. We were, the discussion was about whether or not subdivisions with six or more lots were required to have two access roads. And someone started, one of reading just the first four words of the regulation, which said developers or whoever may be required. That sentence didn't have anything to do with the requirement for two or more, two access roads. The requirement for two access roads says, at least one legal access from a public road to the subdivision must be provided. A second legal access will be required with a major subdivision of lots, six or more, unless an exception is granted by the Board of County Commissioners. No exception to that had been granted, and it would be pretty irresponsible, I think, after the fact to grant an exception when there's 52 lots, 56, 58 families, because some lots have multiple residents in them, to change it when those regulations are there to protect the health, safety, welfare, and the convenience of the owners in the county. I would like to know if any of you did look and realize that what you were saying and repeating over and over, and several of you did. Actually, Commissioner Milne made the most sense. He suggested that you not act on it until you had the information that you needed because it was obvious you didn't. Your attorney also agreed with the word may, which was an error on her part as well. So, you weren't acting on the best information. And I just wonder, when I was in the legislature, if I discovered I made an error like that, I was the first one to admit it and the first one to try to fix it. And I would expect nothing less from you. Would anyone like to answer my question? Did you realize the error because it was brought to your attention? Anyone willing to admit that they realized the error was me?
Ms. Robinson, we're currently in litigation, and we can- Commissioner Robinson, we're, we're currently in litigation, and we cannot speak on that. And I will refer to our county attorney for anything addition to that.
We're in litigation, so that's, I echo Commissioner Norris' comments. And you do have an attorney, and I would encourage you to have your attorney speak to us if there's questions. Thank you.
Yeah, my attorney authorized me to speak to you this evening because it was obvious that you were passing the resolution with no input. And it's just too bad it has to go to litigation when you guys have the power to get it right.
Chairman Norris, commissioners, we're gonna switch gears a little bit, it's pretty heavy in here tonight. Allow me to introduce myself, my name is Nicholas Skowinski, I'm captain with Salt Creek Emergency Services. To my right is firefighter EMT Robert Heward, to my left firefighter EMR Doug Nelson. Earlier this summer, uh, Salt Creek Emergency Services, along with Representative Alaman, our chief Riley Dewitt, our assistant chief, Cody Klimer, all came to you, requesting some help to purchase and acquire some wildland, um, safety gear, personal protective equipment for our firefighters up there in northern Natchona County and Midwest Nederton. Tonight, I just wanted to come and take a few minutes to say thank you, gentlemen, very much. Uh, and thank you to the citizens of Natchona County for allocating those funds to protect the men and women of Salt Creek Emergency Services that do respond to those fires in northern Natchona County, um, all the way to the county line in Fremont and Campbell and southern Johnson County. Firefighter Heward and firefighter Nelson are both wearing that new gear that, uh, the citizens of Natchona County provided for us. And I wanted to take just a minute and let you guys see what, um, that money went towards, and, uh, once again, express my gratitude, uh, on behalf of Salt Creek Emergency Services, our chief, our assistant chief, and our entire department. Thank you for allocating those funds, and to, uh, Natchona County Chief Brian Oliver for helping us procure these funds, uh, or procure this gear through these funds. So thank you, gentlemen, uh, very much. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but we just wanna take a minute and say thank you.
Nick, I appreciate you guys coming in, I really do, and I'm glad that you have the equipment that's gonna protect you in those situations. That's something that we can't afford to allow our guys on the front line to not have what they need. And, uh, it's been a long time coming, but I'm glad that, glad we got there. I'm glad we crossed that finish line.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys again very much, uh, for the generosity, and to the citizens of Natchona County, thank you.
Commissioner Mill.
Firefighter Heward?
Heward, yep. Yeah.
Just a word of advice from somebody who's been there.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Commissioner Laird, I believe he did.
You know, I'm, I'm happy you guys came in here. You look like the three of you stepped out of a movie, almost.
We, uh, we dress to impress and to do the job safely.
You, you deserve that, you deserve this, and it was a long time coming, and you got it. And I appreciate the work you do for this county, I really do.
Thank you. We'll continue to do good work for you guys and for the citizens of this county and the state of Wyoming.
Have, have you guys got all the equipment that, that Brian had ordered? I know there were some of it that was back ordered, that he was waiting for it to come in.
That is correct. There are a few sizes, um, that are back ordered that had to be ordered directly from the manufacturer, and we're still waiting on those, and one more pair of pants. But other than that, um, a shirt, three pairs of pants, and we'll have everything that we need, so, thank you.
That's good. I'm glad, and it sounded like you guys got that equipment right in the nick of time for a couple of fires.
Yeah, yeah, we did, so.
Good.
It's gonna be, uh, we're gonna focus our training and, and learn how to use this gear properly, and store it properly, and clean it, so it lasts us a while. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Well, I'll be quick. I'm Bob Doctor at seventy-six seventeen North Lans Creek Road. First, I would like to say that Lita, Danae, and everyone at the county attorney's office has been very helpful, responsive, and professional. Thank you. I wanted you guys to hear that. Uh, on October eighth, the day after you approved the resolution reserving, or returning our roads to private status, the cable across the road was removed, and the fencing was removed soon after that. I met with Chief Brian Oliver and Michael Cavalier on October fourteenth. They said that the gate our neighbors in Vista West three installed is appropriate and the right width. We discussed a Knox padlock. With Chief Oliver's help, I ordered one, he had to approve that online somehow. The lock arrived on October twentieth, and I delivered it to him, and I think he maybe even installed it that day. So, everything required by this resolution that you approved tonight has already been done, and for almost a month now, so. Instead of the fence, it's always been there, there's an approved gate that emergency personnel can open whenever they determine it's necessary to do so. I have to thank you commissioners for the sound judgment in this resolution. I believe you got it right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, if we don't have any other public comment, Michelle, you said you wanted to say something?
So, I handed out a packet for you guys that had all the resolutions. Okay, so for the holiday one, did you guys have any changes for that one? Should be the very, I think I put my packet in the same order.
This is for the approved holidays, correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, I would like to see, uh, I guess I would make a motion to see a floating holiday in December to satisfy this, uh, continual request.
Twenty-six, it doesn't need one, it's on Friday.
Right, I mean, for.
Twenty-six.
For this next year.
That's why twenty-six, yeah. Calendar year twenty-six is what he's talking about.
That's what I'm talking about. December twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth is on.
Right, I'm saying like a, a floating holiday for December of next year to satisfy this ongoing issue, so they don't have to come back again. You don't have to by any means, so. Or if we're just gonna make it for the twenty-sixth, then.
Twenty-sixth is Saturday.
Whatever day you want. Whatever day is gonna be good for the next year. Just to move, move it forward now, so it's.
So I, I can add that to the agenda, and you guys can make the final decision on, on the second. I don't, I heard from Nick, there were no changes to the legal depository investment firms resolution. Does that's good with you guys? Okay, and then there's the resolution for the official newspaper for twenty-six. Okay. Then there's the investment, um, for the treasure to investment funds. Now we go on to, and then we'll go, um, the one for the meeting schedule. So, um, we do need to pick July sixth or July eighth, because the Tuesday, we're gonna be closed for parade day. So would you guys like to do Monday or Wednesday for the first meeting in July?
What's the board's player? On the eight?
Monday's always just terrible.
Okay, all right. So then on to August eighteenth, um, and November third meetings. Downstairs in elections, so it is really nice, there's been times where we've skipped the meeting in August, because it's the second meeting in the month, and we can legally get away with that. My request is that we either skip it, or we start at five thirty, please?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, uh, as you know, Michelle is an integral part of the election team. Therefore, I would respectfully ask that you respect her wishes on this request.
So which way do you wanna go, skip it or start at five thirty?
I would prefer to skip it.
Just because of the, uh, meeting prep that Michelle has to do.
Yeah.
That would be, thank you. I appreciate that. And then for the meeting on November third, if I remember correctly, statute, we have to have our meeting the first Tuesday of the month. So if we could start the meeting at five thirty that night, then, and then when we get done with our meeting, and if I can safely get away with making the request for no public hearings, when we get done here, I can whip on downstairs and, and we can finish election night.
Minimize, yeah, minimize our, uh, what we have on the agenda that day.
Thanks, kind sir.
I'm, I'm in favor of that, too.
Thank you.
Great doing business with them.
Anything?
Statement investment, I did check with, uh, Nick, and there was no changes on that one, or on his end. Did you guys have any changes?
No.
Okay. December second meeting.
That will move to, uh, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mill. Commissioner Nicolais.
No comment.
Mr. Coates.
No comment.
Commissioner Laird.
I was gonna tell a joke, but, and I think it'd be funny, and I think people would laugh, but I'm not gonna do it tonight. No comment.
That was his joke. All right, I don't have any.
We're from the government, and we're here to help you.
Before we adjourn, our county attorney had one other thing she needed to bring up.
I was just double checking something, thank you.
Okay, we don't need anything else.
We're good, thank you.
All right, I don't have any comment tonight, so we are adjourned.